Our program today will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a five-minute opening statement. A coin toss held earlier this week determined the order of appearance in the debate. Following the opening statements, the candidates will respond to questions from our City Club panel seated down front. Our questioners today are Eva Parsons, Director of People Development for Cellular One and a member of the Program Committee, and Frank Munjam, Senior Producer of Town Hall for KATU-TV and also a member of our Program Committee. Questions were submitted in advance of the meeting in writing by members of the City Club. These are the only questions that will be allowed today. There will be no questions from the floor. The speakers have not seen these questions in advance, and each speaker will have one minute to respond to the question. Our timer, who has not had much work yet today, seated in front is Jolene Clausen, Neighborhood Coordinator for Neighbors West-Northwest, also from our Program Committee. Following the panel questions, each candidate will ask three questions of their opponent. Following the cross-questioning, we'll return to our panel for a series of questions, which will be followed by three-minute closing statements from each candidate. This meeting is governed by the program format that I've just described and by the rules of conduct which are displayed on all of your tables, and the program will adjourn by 1:30. Finally, in order to maximize the time, and we are running just a few minutes behind, but to maximize the time for our candidates, I would ask that you not applaud either candidate during the questioning period. I would now like to ask each of our candidates to begin our opening statements, and we'll start with an opening statement from Charlie Hales, followed directly by that of Chuck Diamond. Charlie?
Thank you, Madam President, fellow City Club members. One year ago, I stood on the bandstand in Peninsula Park and began this, my first race for public office. I took that step then, and I stand here now because I think we must take action on real challenges that face this wonderful, livable, unique city. Since that day, we've built a big grassroots organization in this political campaign that I think draw on the best traditions of Portland's politics. I've done dozens of neighborhood coffees, knocked on 15,000 doors from Selwood to St. John's, from Linton to Lewis and Clark. I've learned more and met more people in a year than in many years before. I've also seen more ways to prepare chicken and encountered more Dobermans than I would care to remember.[176.93][176.93](Laughter). And I'm proud of the positive tone that we've taken in my campaign. We've put our effort into researching issues and making proposals, not into researching my opponent and making attacks. On each of those issues, I've announced specific proposals for how to make Portland a better, more livable city. Public safety, I support the chief's call for additional police officers, and I've proposed budget reforms which will pay for them. I believe community policing will give us a more humane, more neighborhood-oriented way to build the safety of our community. And when it comes to at-risk youth, I support the efforts of the Youth Empowerment and Employment Coalition. You should have seen those kids there last night at St. Andrews Church, talking about what that meant to them, to have a real job. When it comes to growth, not only did I help write the Metro Charter, which does give real regional planning power that Metro must have, but I've also proposed a five-part neighborhood protection strategy that will make sure that growth doesn't violate the character of our neighborhoods. And I've made proposals that will improve the performance of local government, from consolidation to zero-based budgeting to importing ideas like total quality management and mission-oriented government into the administration of our bureaucracies. I will bring activism and consensus building to this office. Those aren't just words for me. I've demonstrated those traits as a leader of my neighborhood association. During my years there, we closed a drug house, we fought inappropriate development, we organized neighborhood cleanups and other neighborhood improvements. I'm proud of those contributions there and in my other civic activities, and I think they're an essential prerequisite to leadership in city government. I've also demonstrated those abilities in my professional career. My opponent has been critical of my advocacy role, but I think he misses the point. That is what one must do to govern. One must bring people together, agree on a plan, and move it forward. I did that when I worked in the tourism industry, when we created a statewide umbrella organization out of a fractious bunch of individual groups, and we went to the 1983 legislature and passed the bill that created the Tourism Division and Oregon's modern tourism promotion campaign, a keystone of our economic development efforts. And I did it at the Home Builders Association, where we built an alliance between the housing industry and 1,000 Friends of Oregon. Henry Richmond and I are often asked to go around the country and explain that one. I've brought that positive activist approach to this campaign, and it has been noticed by all four newspapers which make endorsements in this race: The Oregonian, The Scanner, Just Out, and this week's issue of Willamette Week, and by a long list of organizations as well. But more important than all those endorsements are the hundreds of volunteers that have brought that same energy and spirit of optimism and fair play to my campaign. I wish you could see our funky headquarters at 29th and Northeast Gleason. In fact, I invite you to come and help us in the last 10 days. We've still got plenty of mailings to do. That campaign headquarters, the spirit there, the spirit that we've brought to this race are a validation, I think, that here in Portland, a person of principle can run on ideas and accomplishments, not on spin control. This is a race about who has the skills and ideas to lead Portland to a livable future. I'm prepared for that challenge. This campaign has taught me more. I'm eager to get on with it, and I ask for your support. Thank you.[386.86][386.86](Applause).
As someone who has had the pleasure of debating here before, I can tell you that there are days where debating at the City Club is about as much fun as being run over by a city bus. After the primary performance in the debate, my friends did give me a hard time about my disappeared sense of humor. But a good friend of mine consoled me yesterday and said, "Look, Chuck, if I'd covered government and politics for 20 years, I probably wouldn't be very funny either." So what do I bring to this race beside a disappeared sense of humor on occasion? I believe that I bring a clear and consistent set of political values to the campaign for City Council. They're values that I have held throughout my life, and they are values that are based on a faith and a trust in people. It's why I'm a Democrat with both a large and a small D. It's why I'm pro-choice. It's why I believe so strongly in full human and civil rights for every member of our society. It's why I want individuals and not government to define family. I believe in people. And the people that I've met in this campaign affirm that belief. Those who have rolled up their sleeves and gone to work on community problems restore my hope, and they don't sing their own praises, and they don't demand personal recognition. They simply want to build a better community, and I want to help. To build that better community, we have to have an agenda, a set of clear objectives that reflects the will of the people of this community. And we've been witness to the power of that notion. The idea blossomed to give us downtown. And look at downtown Portland and feel it stir your heart. And ride Max Light Rail and take hope that we can preserve our environment. Walk across Pioneer Square and feel the community-building power represented by the names imprinted on those bricks. I'm fighting for a seat on the Portland City Council because I believe the pipeline filled by the leadership of the 1970s in Portland is running dry. I offer a four-part community-building agenda. Greater neighborhood safety through community policing, fully implemented community policing. Making Portland a full partner in the care and education of children. Producing more family-wage jobs. And making Portland a national model on human and civil rights, starting with the defeat of Ballot Measure Nine November 3rd. And this agenda has brought me widespread support. Groups that have measured both candidates in this race and chosen me include the Democratic Party, the Black Leadership Conference, the Northwest Oregon Labor Council, the Rainbow Coalition, the Hispanic Political Action Committee, the Asian-American Coalition, the National Organization for Women, the three environmental groups endorsing in this race, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, the Oregon Growth Management PAC, and the Sierra Club backed me. As do the firefighters of this community, schoolteachers and bus drivers, and many more. I've also won a dual endorsement from Oregon Women's Political Caucus and the right to privacy. I have the support of thousands of individuals ranging from Neil Goldschmidt to Punch Green. This is a campaign that is rich with people, and it is a campaign that has risen on a core group of political values. Now, I want to make it abundantly clear, I don't have a personal disagreement with my opponent, but I do have a professional disagreement. It begins with the notion that he suggested time and again in this campaign to folks that we are the same philosophically. I disagree. I have been a lifelong Democrat. My opponent was a Republican until a few months before he entered this race. I chose to work my professional life in the public service, first as a journalist covering government and politics, and then in the Neil Goldschmidt administration, working in the Department of Human Resources, serving the most vulnerable citizens of this state. My opponent has chosen to spend most of his adult life as a lobbyist for special interest groups. For the past eight years, he has lobbied for the Metropolitan Home Builders, and the City Council does more work relating to home builder interests than perhaps any other single group. The decisions dramatically impact the financial well-being of developers who belong to that organization, and my campaign estimates that those interests have contributed about 40% of the considerable funds that my opponent brings to this race. Now, you may conclude that those facts are insignificant, or they don't concern you, or they don't bother you, and that's fair enough. But my point is that the voters ought to know them and ought to weigh them as they make a decision in this race. I absolutely believe that you have a very real choice November 3rd, and your decision will say a great deal about the future definition of Portland. We need a community that is supported by the will of the people, and I promise you the tenacity and the hard work to help build it. Thank you.[692.43][692.43](Applause).
We'll now move to the portion of our program which consists of questions from our City Club panel, and I'll turn the program over to panelists Eva Parsons and Frank Munjam. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the question asked, after which the other candidate will have one minute to rebut. Again, I would ask you not to applaud during the questioning period, and the first question for Charlie Hales comes from Eva Parsons.
Mr. Hales, you alluded to this in your opening statement, but this is a little more specific. In the past, City Council has budgeted more dollars for the Police Bureau for more officers, only to see those dollars eaten away by other costs such as overtime. How would you assure a skeptical public that increased funds for public safety would actually result in more officers on the street?
I think this is a very important point. Community policing has been talked about by every political candidate in the city this year, and it is important that we do that. But I don't think the Police Bureau should be exempt from the same kind of management reforms that we need to look at throughout city government. The Association for Portland Progress recently did a citywide audit in which they found that the span of control in city government had actually shrunk since Measure Five, from about 5.2 workers per manager to about 4.9 workers per manager. And I think the Police Bureau has some of those same problems. I think we need to make sure that we have as many of the uniformed personnel in that bureau on the street as possible and as few people doing clerical work who are in uniform as possible. And I think the chief and the council have to start taking specific steps in the management and the structure of that bureau to ensure that result.
I testified yesterday before Portland City Council, calling for passage of the resolution that would hire the remaining number of police we need to reach the 100 that would allow us to fully implement community policing. And when I testified, I asked for two additional steps to be taken by the Portland City Council as they implemented the resolution. Number one, that they look at new and innovative ways to take uniformed officers who are already trained and are given inside assignments at the Police Bureau and to send them out to the field where they can begin to serve people now. And the second thing that I ask is, as we hire these additional officers, we make sure we get guarantees from the Police Bureau that for every new officer hired, there will be a new assignment of an officer out in the field in a neighborhood to further the goals and to implement community policing.
Mr. Diamond, Oregon's 20-year-old land use law is one of the toughest in the country, yet it hasn't been enough to curb urban sprawl. What specific ideas would you recommend for controlling how and where future growth occurs?
Well, I believe that what we need to do first and most fundamentally in this region is make sure we hold the line on the urban growth boundary and don't allow it to expand. I think it sends a signal about how we're going to treat the growth that is headed our way over the next 20 years. In terms of the areas that are outside the urban growth boundary and how we manage those where some development has already occurred, I have suggested that we establish an urban reserve program, where we identify areas that at some point in the future would become a part of this metropolitan region. But they should never become a part of this metropolitan region until we have reached a certain level of density inside the current urban growth boundary. This translates to a higher-density growth in the city of Portland, and I have advocated for this throughout this campaign, very directly and specifically. And I believe we can accomplish that in the Union Station project in North McAdam and primarily along increased density on the Max Light Rail line.
I believe in order to do this, we must do a number of things at once, and I think the issue of growth management is the one that will preoccupy us for much of the next decade. It is the issue that will decide the livability of this region, and it is a whole set of things. I too believe that a strong urban growth boundary is an important tool, but that's too simplistic. We also have to look at the 40,000 acres of land outside of the urban growth boundary that Clackamas County has zoned for five-acre lots. I'm glad that Chuck endorses the idea of the urban reserve because I created that idea and started working on that idea with LCDC over the last few years. We also need tough regional planning, and that's why the Metro Charter's provision about a regional plan are critical. But inside of the city, after all, we're running for city commissioner. The real work has to be done in terms of sensitive neighborhood plans that allow us to accommodate change within the city without violating the character of our neighborhoods and accommodate it different ways in different parts of the city. That's the real challenge for the City Council, taking our market share of growth and handling it very carefully.
Mr. Hales, a recent Supreme Court decision has placed the future of urban renewal in doubt and may end the city's ability to finance public improvements similar to Pioneer Square and Waterfront Park. What should the City Council do now?
This should be a top priority. When you leave this building today, look in any direction, and you will see the results of the successful use of tax increment financing, a technical term that most people have never heard. But that tool, in the hands of the Portland Development Commission and the Portland City Council, over the last couple of decades, has transformed a declining downtown into one of the nation's showpieces. Without that tool, we are dead in the water. I think a top priority for the next City Council must be to go to the legislature and ask the legislature to refer a measure to the voters which will restore that authority. Yes, the drafters of Measure Five didn't like urban renewal, but I don't believe that the voters of this state, if presented with a good case for why we must have it, and not only what it's done for Portland, but what it will do for Baker City and Pendleton and Roseburg and so many other cities in the state which need it, I think they will confer that authority back to local governments and allow us to make our cities work.
Like other folks, I have my criticisms of the Portland Development Commission. I would like to see them aim their efforts more at neighborhood revitalization, and I would like to see a broader representation on the commission itself. But I believe that it is a fundamentally important tool for us to have in this community. Step number one, and the most preferable cleanup or answer to the problem that we have now, would be to have a constitutional amendment wherein we could go back and begin to use tax increment financing. If for some reason that doesn't work, and we ought to be planning in case it doesn't, either in terms of getting it out of the legislature or the folks approving it, I would favor some form of new revenue that would give PDC enough money to operate outside of Ballot Measure Five cap and to continue to function in an independent manner, a quasi-independent manner. I think it's critical for that agency to be able to do that. It is a very important agency, and it will be a top priority of my term on the City Council.
Mr. Diamond, Portland police have used deadly force at least eight times in the last 12 months. Does this constitute excessive use of force?
Well, let me tell you that I'm not going to stand up here today and second-guess the officers on the street. That's not to say that I don't have concern about the number of times in which the Portland police officers do use deadly force. I do have concern about it. But the current City Council that we have, when they went through their last budget cycle, for example, initially made cuts that would have gone into training programs to help officers be trained and know when they should use deadly force out in the field. We've got to work with our police officers, I think, in a better and in a stronger way. I have called for a strengthened citizen review process that would be established that would work with the Portland Police Bureau, but I don't think it's appropriate for us at this point, in the absence of some very significant evidence from outside experts, to begin indicting members of the Portland Police Bureau.
Most Portlanders have never heard of PIAC, the Police Internal Investigations Advisory Committee, and I think that's an indication that we need a citizen review process that is more accessible and more visible, and that advises not only the bureau but the City Council about these very difficult issues. I too am not ready to second-guess the officers who are in those situations, but I think we need a more open and inclusive process to help the bureau. The chief has done good work in the creation of the Chief's Forum, and that concept of having citizens involved in helping to make Police Bureau policy is a healthy one, a very healthy one, and will help ensure that Portland will never be subject to the kind of tension and violence that we saw in Los Angeles this year. So that openness, I think, has to be the first ingredient in addressing that issue.
Mr. Hales, the city and the Trailblazer organization have been negotiating for months over the terms of a new sports arena. How far should the city go to assure that the Blazers stay in Portland?
From what I know of the package that's now being brought to the city, it is just barely a good enough deal. It is one of those "hold your nose and sign it" propositions, I think, for city government. It appears that the revenue out of the project will cover the city's contributions in infrastructure to the project. I am, however, concerned that the city went into those negotiations and basically had an open-ended agreement for paying legal fees without any understanding of where in the city's budget those legal fees would be paid, and they have run up an enormous bill in legal fees and consulting costs for this protracted negotiation. And they had sort of bet on the come that they would still have Portland Development Commission tax increment money to be able to pay for those legal costs. Now, thanks to the Supreme Court decision that you mentioned, that source is gone, so the city has a big hole in its budget that was not anticipated. So I think we need to stop the loss on the legal fees now and proceed with the rest of the agreement with in-house staff.
Well, I've said in the past that I think there's something a bit odd, and it feels a little strange to look at all the problems we have in northeast Portland and then consider the amount of money that we're going to put into the Trailblazers. I mean, there's some kind of cognitive dissonance there. But the alternative would be to have that team move to some other city or have the team build a facility out in the suburbs. And I frankly don't think that serves the interests of Portland, or particularly Portland and downtown and this inner area, which is absolutely vital that we protect. It distinguishes us from other areas around this country. Now, I agree that we are getting close to the time period where they're calling for too much, or too much will be there, and the new agreement that has been worked out between the city and the Trailblazers is one that I would personally support, but it's going to require that folks who are on the council keep a very close eye on how the spending above that $34 million cap that we earlier thought we had, how that progresses and how it goes on.
Mr. Diamond, the Association for Portland Progress has called for the creation of a city utilities commission to oversee the budget and operation of the Bureau of Environmental Services. What is your position on this recommendation and its potential costs?
I'm opposed to it. I believe that those folks who are elected as members of the Portland City Council and the mayor ought to handle those responsibilities and those duties. We have a difficult enough time now in building a clear and strong community consensus around a community agenda with all the great dispersal of government power that we have in the city and with the commission form of government, and I don't think that we'd ought to add to it. I'm opposed to it.
I also am opposed to that idea. The City Council, I think, needs to work much more as a board of directors and less as a five-mayor system or five feudal lords defending their turf. I think we need to make some steps in the governance of our city to make sure that the commissioner system's flaws are mitigated. I've proposed a couple of things that I think will help resolve that problem, short of having commissions installed in each bureau. One would be to have the new mayor take all of the bureaus for the first four months while we do a strategic plan and a budget with no one having any turf to defend. And because all the bureaus are going to be reshuffled this year anyway, it's an opportunity to once again do that. You might recall that Mayor Goldschmidt did that. I've also suggested that we ought to institutionalize a program of zero-based budgeting in city government and have the whole council review the whole budget of each agency every four or five years in tandem with a performance audit by the auditor's office to, in effect, pull each agency through the knot hole on a periodic basis. That way, we can look at the management practices and costs within the bureaus without inserting a commission in the structure.
Thanks, Frank and Eva, for your questions. We're going to leave our panel at this point, and during this portion of the program, each candidate will ask three questions of his opponent. The question must be asked in 30 seconds, and the opponent will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have 30 seconds to rebut. The role of questioner will alternate between the candidates, and we'll begin with Charlie Hales.
Chuck, you've said that you favor an entertainment tax for the arts and, if needed, a new tax for police. Please be specific about this police tax. What type of tax? A property tax, a local sales tax, an income tax, or some other specialty tax will you propose if you determine that the additional money is needed?
The point that I have made, and it's contained in a position paper, if any of you would like to have copies that I issued September 12th when I announced and identified community policing and neighborhood safety as my number-one issue, states that we need to hire the 100 police, and we need to hire them now in this current budget cycle or the next budget cycle in order to fully implement the community policing program. Now, I have gone on and stated numerous times that I believe that we can do this within existing funds. I believe that's been shown by the resolution that Earl Blumenauer submitted. I think it's been shown by the cuts that Vera Katz proposed. I have said to the people, though, that to me, this is an act of faith. Either we hire those 100 officers or take the city in a different direction to deal with crime. And if we're not going to hire those 100 officers because of a lack of money, I have said that I would go to the ballot or move to go to the ballot with a revenue measure to at least let the people vote it up or down. I have not identified that revenue. It would be something that would be outside of Ballot Measure Five, and the Office of Fiscal Administration has the list for you, Charlie.
Well, there is no list in that if you're going to propose an additional tax, I think it's important to be able to say what you will charge, how it would be assessed. There are situations, I think, in which the council will need to increase taxes and fees. In fact, the parks levy of a few years ago is a good example. I'd like to look into renewing that levy to continue making improvements in the city's parks. But I think it's important that we be specific with people when we make proposals in the campaign process.
Speaking of taxation, Charlie, you participated in the writing of the Metro Charter, and in your work on it, you brought forward an amendment that, if it hadn't failed, would have effectively exempted the hotel motel industry from a metro-imposed tax. I'm wondering if you could explain to us why you saw it in the language of that charter itself to protect a specific industry.
Chuck, I think you must have gone to the George Bush School of Campaigning, in which you dig back through people's records and find a Willie Horton in there somewhere that you scare people about and hope that they'll vote for you by default. Yes, I supported that amendment. It was one of about 350,000 amendments that the committee looked at. I thought it was a good idea. Yes, I used to work for the hotel industry. Does that mean I can never agree with them again, all these years later? It was a proposal to put a cap or to levelize room taxes throughout the metro area. At that point in the charter process, we were looking at a variety of rather Rube Goldbergian mechanisms in the charter to try to control Metro's ability to tax, on the theory that a metro with a blank check would not be welcomed by the voters. We later simplified that tax structure in the charter, and that proposal was discarded, and I supported the charter regardless. It's interesting to note, however, that the hotel industry is now mounting a campaign against the charter, and I support it.
One quick point of clarification, Charlie. George Bush is the president of your former party and the president you supported four years ago, not me. Now, Charlie has told us that his connections to groups for which he has lobbied isn't going to affect any decision that he will make, but he did propose this amendment to the Metro Charter to protect that industry, and the amendment, incidentally, was written by the current lobbyist for the hotel motel industry, a person who serves on Charlie's campaign committee.
Your question for Mr. Diamond?
Chuck, in preparing my ideas for this campaign, I've consulted a variety of people: neighborhood leaders and business leaders within the city, and then our partners in the rest of the region: the mayor of Gresham, the chairman of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. In fact, I've even canvassed part of southeast Portland with a member of the Troutdale Planning Commission. Which suburban elected officials have you worked with and have you approached for ideas in the process of developing your campaign? And if none, how will you overcome the image of just another Portland insider who doesn't have a good working relationship with our partners in the region?
Well, I would say, first of all, that my principal and primary concern is with the city of Portland, and I believe that the agenda that somebody who runs for City Council ought to build ought to be based, first and foremost, on communications and conversations we have with people in this community. And I will not apologize for a minute for the process that I've used. I've spent hundreds of hours, and I've talked with countless numbers of folks who live in this in this community. I have indeed talked with people who also live at the suburban area, not just elected officials, not just powerful folks, but I've held coffees, as a matter of fact, in Beaverton. I've held coffees in Troutdale, in which I've visited with folks who live outside of this area, and I've certainly consulted with members of the legislature like Senator Otto and others on a regional basis. I have an ability to work with folks, and it doesn't have to come from past experience of working as a lobbyist. It comes from past experiences working as a reporter, Charlie. I have worked with folks in this region, done lots of stories with them, and I have a good relationship with them.
The ability to work with one's colleagues in the suburban area around us is going to be critical in the next few years, and it was key in both the Oregonians and Willamette Week's endorsement opinions in this race and why they endorsed me. The Portland area is going to grow. It's going to be faced with challenges from water to growth management that will require regional cooperation. There is a perception among those elected officials outside of the city limits that Portland politicians are often ignoring their interests and are unwilling to treat them as equals. I will bring that strength to the council, the ability to work with our colleagues in the region.
Mr. Diamond, your question for Mr. Hales?
One of the groups opposing the Western Bypass, clearly and consistently, a highway that I've opposed and that you earlier supported but now oppose, one of the groups opposing it, Charlie, is a group called Stop, Sensible Transportation Options for People. As a group of citizen activists, how would you evaluate the work of Stop in this important public policy discussion?
I think in its early years, Stop may have been accurately characterized by the NIMBY syndrome, a few people that didn't want a freeway in their backyard, a rather natural response on their part. Since then, I think they have gone on to become, like many grassroots groups, like the many I've participated in, to be a more responsible player in the process. They have now, for example, promoted an idea called traffic calming within the city, where you use diverters, some of which are not very popular in the neighborhoods, to try to control traffic and to slow it down. So I think Stop has made that transition from a reactionary group, which is how neighborhood associations are often perceived and often start, and in Portland, we have a very different system in which that citizen participation is institutionalized. I'm proud to have been a part of that system. So I think that we can count on Stop to be a constructive player in this dialogue in the future. We're not going to build the Western Bypass, of course, if we can do what I've proposed, which is adopt 1,000 Friends of Oregon's Lutrac Study, which rezones Washington County in favor of transit and the pedestrian and away from the automobile.
Well, here's what the Charlie Hales who worked at the Home Builders and tells us he brought groups together, here's what he wrote in his Home Builders column in July of 1989. "1,000 Friends has teamed up with a charming group of NIMBYs who call themselves Stop and has mounted a sophisticated legal challenge to the planned Western Bypass. The NIMBY's point of view is understandable, though despicable. I've got mine, you go away," end quote. Charlie Hales, July 1989, in his own column in the Home Builders newsletter.
Mr. Hales, your question for Mr. Diamond?
Chuck, the Office of City Commissioner is both a policymaking position and an administrative job. Your Department Human Resources job included some supervisory duties. Your job description said one position. Press reports have said three. Please explain the specifics of your management experience. Have you proposed budgets? Have you hired and fired employees? Have you carried out the restructuring of a department or organization?
I think it's about time, Charlie, that both of us leveled with the folks on this whole issue and argument and debate over the management experience question. If people want somebody to take this job at City Council who has extensive experience managing large groups of employees and building large budgets and dealing with them, you're going to have to write in a name, because the truth is, neither of us have had that substantial experience. I was part of the senior management team at the Department of Human Resources, which is an agency of 12,000 people, has a budget of $4 billion, and I was there as we worked through the after-effects of ballot measure five, day after day, dealing with the very difficult problems that we faced with the cuts that were produced by ballot measure five.
Chuck, your position was the spokesperson for the Department of Human Resources. It is important to have management experience for this office. We have seen recent occupants of Portland City Council positions who did not have management experience, but in some cases had had only media experience before coming to the office, and they were unable to handle many of the management requirements of the job. I have had management experience. My wife and I built our own small business from nothing to employing, yes, only five employees. I worked for an organization and did the budgets for an organization with $2 million worth of budget authority. I think that management experience is a critical prerequisite.
Charlie, I'm wondering if you can tell us whether you believe in the value of protecting trees in cities, or are all those who would protect trees radical tree huggers, as you've suggested in several of your news columns that you wrote while you were at the Home Builders?
Chuck, I can guarantee you that all of my columns at Home Builders were not boring, and some of them were rather confrontational. That was my job. I was an advocate. I was a good one. If I'm going to be an advocate for the city of Portland as a city commissioner, I'll also be a good one. But I have also been, as I have in other cases, able to bring very polarized interests together on this issue. My organization, the Home Builders Association, that I worked for, helped write the tree protection ordinances for the city of Beaverton and for the city of Gresham. The mayor's here. You can talk to her about it after the debate. I also built a home on an infill lot in the city of Portland and moved my house, got a variance, and redesigned my house at considerable expense to save a tree. In fact, there are six mature Douglas firs and four mature ash trees on my lot. There are more trees on my lot than any other one on the block. I like trees a lot, Chuck.
Please hold your applause.
And I'm very happy to hear that, once again, you've changed, Charlie, because I want to quote to you from what reporter Robert Olmos wrote in the Oregonian a few years ago, quote, "People who want to live with trees should move to the country." That, in a nutshell, is the opinion of Charlie Hales of the Home Builders Association of Metropolitan Portland. And in the following story about Charlie's opposition to the tree preservation ordinance in Beaverton, Olmos quoted you directly as saying, and again, I quote, "If people want to live among trees, they can move outside the urban growth boundary. There are many areas outside the urban growth boundary where they will find those trees." Charlie Hales' words, end quote.
Thank you. We'll now return to our City Club panel for the final questioning in this debate. As before, the candidate will have one minute to respond to each question, and the opponent will have one minute to rebut, and we'll again begin with Eva Parsons, but with a question for Chuck Diamond.
Mr. Diamond, what special qualities, attributes, and knowledge would you bring to the City Council that it does not have now? And please, if you would, be specific.
I love those specific questions about, tell us what a wonderful, incredible human being you are, and they're the ones that I've always had, I think, the most trouble with. I think I would look in two areas. One, my experience in the media, and I think if you function well in the media and as a reporter, probably the best talent that you have is the ability to listen, and I'm not going to turn around and say, gosh, none of those folks down there have an ability to listen. I think some of them do. But an ability to listen, to clearly understand what it is that people are telling you, and then to reflect back what it is that those folks have said, and to do this with groups that are sometimes very contentious and are arguing and fighting, and I think that's a very positive skill that I would bring. In addition, I think I bring a sensitivity to the plight of the poor and those who face vulnerable circumstances in our society, based on the time that I spent at the Department of Human Resources. I've been on the front lines and watched drug-affected babies, and I've watched circumstances where children are taken from families, and I think I would bring that sensitivity to the council.
I assume I should respond in terms of my abilities rather than Chuck's. I think I've said enough on that subject. I would summarize it simply as four things: neighborhood leadership, small business experience, regional understanding, and a record of consensus building.
Mr. Hales, did developer Phil Morford act responsibly in demolishing four houses in northwest Portland in 1989?
He acted legally. There was an old highway traffic safety commercial that I remember that the punchline from it was, Joe was right, dead right. Mr. Morford was right, dead right. He lost a fortune, he ruined his reputation, and he polarized the city over infill housing, something we must be able to do. Since then, he, I think, has improved his designs and has improved his community relations. I supported his ability to build those row houses at the time, as controversial as that was, because they were, after all, legal. Now, after that awful thing happened, I sat down with a group of neighborhood activists, construction industry people, City Council staff, and helped draft one of the toughest demolition delay ordinances in the country. We got it adopted, and that will never happen again.
This theme in 1992 of political change for most of us is applied to government, wanting to do something different. I think Charlie applies it in an entirely different circumstance. Examine the record that he established while the Morford Row House controversy went on, which was the most difficult thing that we've done and had happen at a neighborhood level in recent years. He entirely sided with Mr. Morford, and not only that, you can talk to neighborhood leaders who are here today, he never showed up in northwest to try to play a consensus building or "let's bring folks together" kind of role, and in fact, what he said was that the folks who were fighting this were NIMBYs, again, that pejorative term, one of his favorites, and he went on to say that not only were they NIMBYs, but those who really disagreed with us were just renters who were trying to get a good deal for themselves. And that was the record that he established during that very difficult, controversial, and hard human fight that we had. The folks in the neighborhood didn't feel like they got listened to, and I think that they have a fair complaint when they say that. And that's not to say I disagree with the construction of the row houses, but they should have been listened to.
Mr. Diamond, as a member of the council, you would have broad authority and responsibility in the area of publicly-funded arts and music programs. What galleries or arts and music events do you participate in on a regular basis?
Well, I would say the very first thing that I and my wife and my family contribute to this is that we do not have a television set that sits out in any main area of the house that we hold. It is in the closet, and it comes out only when there is something significant going on, a presidential debate, a World Series game, or some other national disaster, a City Council debate, or something like that. I do sometimes attend the First Thursday event. I do spend time going to galleries. My favorite in this community would probably be Quintana's in northwest, because it has a lot of southwestern art, and I care a great deal about that. We spend a lot of time going to movies. We go to plays. We enjoy it all, and I have taken a position to take risks and step to the front as we try to figure out how we're going to fund and protect arts, which I consider to be an absolutely vital part of this community in the future.
My wife and I have enjoyed season tickets to the symphony for the last couple of years, one of our few indulgences, and it was a nice respite from the early stages of the campaign. I hope in the future it will be a respite from a busy schedule at City Hall. I've also participated in the First Thursday process in making the tours of the galleries, and that's becoming an increasingly important part of Portland's arts scene and entertainment scene as well. I'm also particularly enamored of the old antique shops in Multnomah Village. I enjoy them a great deal, and I think a commitment to the arts is going to be an important part of the next City Council's work. Not only do we need to make sure that arts funding is provided within the city's budget, but that we also have a regional solution. I think the Drummond Committee's work now to try to come up with a so-called Denver Plan for Portland, a region-wide funding mechanism to make sure that both arts facilities and arts organizations are financially sound is going to be critical. We've lost some very good arts organizations in the last couple of years because of the high rents at our facilities. We shouldn't lose any more, and we've got to make arts a priority, again, regionally.
This will be our final question, and it will be for Charlie Hales first, from Frank Munjam.
Mr. Hales, what would be your top priority in your first 60 days in office if you are elected to the City Council?
My top priority in the first 60 days will be the top priority until we get it done, and that is making sure that the full community policing agenda is adopted, not just hiring the additional officers, because that's going to take time. There are only 19 spots not filled in the police training process at the state level, so we can only jam so many more new officers through that process at any one time, but working with the neighborhoods to make sure that we have more neighborhood-based police operations like the Smile Center in southeast, like the new storefront police office that's going to be opened in the Safeway at Rose City Park, like we have elsewhere in the city, and working with neighborhood associations, working with the community to change the whole model of how we police. This is more than more cops. It is an organizational and philosophical change in how we police the community. It's not a new idea to have an officer who's closely identified with the neighborhood and spends more time on preventing crime, but it's an idea that will take a lot of work to implement.
I said, again, on September 12th, 1991, when I announced public safety, neighborhood safety, community policing is my number-one priority. It would be in the first 60 days, whether I have the assignment of the Police Bureau or not. Beyond that, I would work on the City Council passing a resolution that would say, "The goal of this community in the care and education of children is to see that we ultimately reach a point where every child has available 24 hours a day a caring adult," and then to set about in specific tangible steps to move this community toward that goal with the city being a full partner. Number three, what I would do is work to establish the Economic Futures Group that I have called for, that is going to put together a 20-year strategy for creating more jobs for the people who live in this community. When we go to north and northeast and say, "We've got a wonderful democracy. Come on down, set at the table," they're absolutely hollow words if folks don't have jobs and have economic independence, and within 60 days, I'll go to work on all three of those items.
Before we move to closing statements, I think we should give both candidates a big round of applause. We'll now move to the final portion of the program, which is closing statements. There'll be three-minute closing statements from each candidate, and we'll begin with Chuck Diamond, followed by Charlie Hales.
Well, I may not have done as well as I would have hoped on the sense of humor part, but I will keep working on it, I promise you. But I do believe that I've demonstrated that I have brought a consistent set of political values to this race, and they are based on a trust and a faith in people. I've spelled out a basic nuts-and-bolts, community-building agenda that I want to take to City Hall. Improve neighborhood safety by fully implementing community policing. Bring the city into a larger partnership in the care and education of our children. Create more family wage jobs for the people who live here, and make this city a national model on human and civil rights. My political values and agenda have captured the support of some wonderful community-building organizations: the Democratic Party, the Black Leadership Conference, the Northeast Oregon Labor Council, the Rainbow Coalition, the Hispanic Political Action Committee, the Asian American Coalition, the National Organization for Women, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, Oregon Growth Management PAC, the Sierra Club, the firefighters of this community, the schoolteachers, the bus drivers, and more. And we've got our work cut out for us, because we are buffeted in 1992 by so many difficult winds: crime, poverty, growth, a failing national economy, a federal government that doesn't seem to give a damn, and the most difficult wind in our face, our own growing cynicism that questions whether or not we can make community work. We see the symptoms of that cynicism in everything from ballot measure five in the last election to ballot measure nine in this one. And it is why this campaign, for me, has been as much a search for hope as a search for votes, because if I can't find the hope, a majority of the votes won't mean very much. But hope hit me square in the face as I listened while the folks at Piedmont Neighborhood Association talked about their work on the first citizen foot patrols. Prostitution and drug houses plagued their areas. So a few people got together, and the idea of neighborhood foot patrols was born. The bureaucracy didn't want them to do it at that time, but they overcame the bureaucracy. They were afraid personally, but they overcame that fear, and they started the patrols, and they had an impact on the problems of their neighborhood. But beyond that, they did something more important. As they worked together, they built community, and it is that spirit, that promise, that hope that I want to take to Portland City Hall as a member of City Council. In the brief time remaining for me, I truly want to acknowledge, first, those who I believe have sacrificed the most in this political campaign, at least in a personal sense, and that is the families of the candidates. Patty and your children, and Kathy and our children, I thank you very much. And I also want to acknowledge my opponent. I don't have a personal disagreement with him. I'll state it again. It is a professional one, and I want to acknowledge he has been a tough and difficult opponent in this race, and if I win, I will be a better city commissioner for this experience. Finally, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for the honor of this democratic exercise. Thank you.
My special thanks also to my wife Patty and my son Andrew for being here, and my good wishes to the Diamond family as well. Chuck, you've been a principled opponent in this campaign. Thank you. When Patty and I moved here, we came because of the Portland story: a city with clean air, healthy neighborhoods, a downtown that was sprucing up, not winding down, a city that was tolerant and open and innovative, a city where real wilderness was not far away. That story was... That story was true, it is still, and it can be tomorrow. Yes, there are problems, big ones: gangs, crime, water, growth, taxes, 1991's measure five, and the bigotry which led to Mulligata Syrah's murder and the shame of measure nine. But I believe that with energetic problem solvers on the city council, those problems can be met and overcome. We might, just at the time when we need it the most, have just the right mixture of experiences and backgrounds on the Portland City Council. I believe that my background and abilities will be an important ingredient in that mixture. What can we accomplish together in the next few years? A lot of important work. Some of it will be exciting, like more light rail lines, new public green spaces, and sensitive new neighborhood plans. Some of it will be tedious, like digging through bureau budgets to do the difficult but necessary work of reprioritizing how our city spends our money. I've always believed in the inherent value of hard work, whether it was in struggling to build the business that Patty and I owned, in my thousands of hours of community service, in campaigning up and down miles and miles of Portland streets. I'm going to do something unusual in my closing statement. I'm going to quote my opponent. Chuck said not long ago in an Oregonian story that Charlie would go all out for those who sign his paycheck. I don't think he meant it as a compliment. I think, actually, it was an example of what Mayor Daley once called insinuendo, but I'll take it as a compliment. Exactly, Chuck. What's so sinister about that? In fact, when you think about it, what an odd thing to criticize. My constituents in my neighborhood association wanted me to go all out for them, and I did. My constituents in the Home Builders Association deserved no less than my very best efforts. But that was then and this is now. I can think of no better focus for that work ethic than applying it to the many requirements of this multifaceted office: guiding, managing, yes, advocating for, this city. I love this city. I'm eager to lead it and I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
On behalf of City Club, I'd like to thank both Mr. Diamond and Mr. Hales for joining us today. And regardless of your candidate preference, I hope you will register that preference come November 3rd in your right to vote. Thank you and we are adjourned.[1769.01]